Board members is with us tonight. Brandon is Skyping or Googling in, so he is not physically here with us tonight. Thank you for joining us, Brandon, and thank to the rest of the team that is up there. If you would like to address the board, you can certainly email Mr. Fierson or myself. I am online watching that too, if you'd like something to address the board. With that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, everybody, for attending. We will start with the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thanks, Steve, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mark. Any discussion or any changes you'd like to see to the agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval of the agenda, state "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are in a communication. Student School Board Representative Reports, Olivia Matuska, Ellie Bigelow. And this is your final meeting for the year, ladies. Thank you for your contribution all year. Thank you for your positive attitude and your leadership throughout the school. And we look forward to hearing your report tonight.
Well, thank you, guys. So we just wanted to let you guys know that everything is still going very well. Online school is kind of the same as what we talked about last week. Our classes that were project-based are still project-based. And the classes where we'll take tests in or we'll do reports on stuff, that's still the same. And another thing that's kind of crazy is seniors last week, this week, they are done this Friday, which fourth quarter has kind of zoomed by, and I didn't really think it would, but it really has. Our last day of school is not this Thursday, but next Thursday, May 28. And we actually have Monday off because of Memorial Weekend. So hopefully, we'll be able to have a long weekend and enjoy that. So how our classes are ending this year is we're doing, most classes are doing no finals. So there are some exceptions to that. Some college courses are requiring the final and some are not. So for example, my college trig class, we have to do a final for it. But Ellie is in college lit, and she does not need a final for that. So it just kind of depends on the professor or your teacher and what they require for you to get college credit. Another thing that happened actually yesterday for the seniors was Baccalaureate. And my dad and I actually watched that together, and I just thought that was excellent. I thought there was so much effort put into it, and it was performed so well. And I loved how students were involved. And I thought that just went better than expected. And I just think that's kind of the expectations we have for this and how seniors, I think, that I have talked to at least, know that so much effort is being given and they, you know, they don't want it to end like this, but it's the best possibility.
Olivia and I also want to talk about the communication between the school and the students and our parents. So most of the communication comes through our personal or school Gmail. So my parents get the same emails that I do from the school. So we get, for example, we get emails from the guidance office. Like last week, we got an email from Mrs. Bealan, and it was a junior to the junior class, and it had a whole list of opportunities that juniors have and talked about the ACT. Other emails that we get is the last kind of week, there's been talk. It is, you can submit to have your classes become pass no credit, which basically means if you get a 50% or higher in your class, you can pass the class. And if you do 50% or lower, you get no credit for the class, but it won't affect your GP at all, so you would just have a pass in your transcript. You can also choose not to do that, so you can just stick with the normal letter grades. And you can do that for individual classes. So if I wanted to do just one class, pass no credit, I could do that, or I could do all my classes that way, just kind of personal preference. But I think the school has done a great job communicating your options and kind of how we're dealing with the situation. Another way the students have kind of been involved is we've had different drive-ups for different things. So last week, we had our locker drive-up. So the janitors cleaned out our lockers and put all the school materials back in classrooms and then personal belongings in trash bags with your name on it. And then we'd drive through on the east doors of the school, and they, you say your name, and then they give you your bag, and you go on your way. And there's kind of been a lot of different things like that. So for example, on the 21st, they have the academic awards pickup. So I don't know who's going to pick their mind, but at some point, we will drive through and you get it, and then you kind of go on your way, practice safe social distancing. And so, and I think a lot of things have been working that way. So for example, our basketball banquet was two weeks ago, and that's kind of how we'll do our uniform pickup and getting awards for that. I think it's a great way to get your belongings, but also practice safe social distancing.
Ellie actually got a really good award at our basketball banquet, which was sixth man of the year, which is very exciting, so I just wanted to let you guys know that. Another thing that actually started last week but is continuing into this Friday is AP exams. So, you know, when quarantine or COVID came out, we kind of were confused about AP exams, but they're making it the best possible. So AP exams are only three response questions this year, and they are only 45 minutes long. They used to be around three or four hours. It depended on what exam you had. You had, so I'm actually in AP Statistics, so if COVID did not happen, you would have a three-and-a-half-hour exam with two hours of multiple choice and then an hour and a half of three-response questions. So they really cut that down this year. And the people that I have talked to, it has gone really well. So it's just all online. They give you so many resources to use. Ms. Itzty, who was my statistics teacher, she's been sending out emails and resources for us to use. And so I actually have my AP exam this Friday, and you're supposed to log in 30 minutes before, I'll be done at 2:45, and you just take pictures of your work and submit it. And all I've heard is going really well, and I think it's the best possible situation for students to still be able to get college credit during this time.
So Olivia and I also wanted to kind of give a big shout-out to the seniors. We know that this is obviously not how they wanted to end it, but we think that the school has done a great job with making this kind of a special memorable time for them, even though it's in a different way than they thought it was going to be. For example, this last week, it was kind of fun to watch it all on Twitter. The teachers took a bus around, and they all had their county gear, and they went to students' houses and brought signs and talked with them and kind of, just a fun experience for the seniors to have right before their last week of school, and makes this a special time for them.
So I know this is kind of a shorter one for us, but we just wanted to say thank you guys all for letting us be your Student School Board reps this year, and we'll hopefully be able to do it next year with you guys. So do you guys have any questions?
Great job. It's been a pleasure working with you guys.
I just had two questions. One is, and either one can ask, Gmail, how much do you use your school Gmail versus a different Gmail? And if you could keep that Gmail account, would you keep it?
So personally, I use my school Gmail account every day. If it's, so I get notifications on all my assignments through Gmail, my school Gmail. I get, that's how I communicate with all my teachers if I have any questions or feedback or they have feedback for me. I communicate with them through Gmail. So yeah, I guess I would keep my school Gmail. I use it for a lot of different things. As for personal Gmail, I guess I only, I use it for like, I don't know. I don't really even know what I use it for, but I mostly use my school email.
I use my school email most often. I actually just got my own Gmail account two weeks ago because I realized that I wouldn't be able to use my account as long anymore. But I know I would definitely continue using it because that's, I mean, I wasn't very smart about it, but that's how I signed into like all my Netflix or Spotify. That's the email I use, so I'll have to change those soon.
And I also think, like, I use my school Gmail to write, like, use it through my Drive. So all my papers that I've written through high school, resumes that I've made, any sort of information like that is all on my school Gmail. So when I graduate, it's going to be interesting to see if I can transfer that to my personal Gmail or how I'm going to do that. I mean, obviously, I don't need all my papers, but like, I've updated my resume a few times through that, and I don't know, some of those fun papers that you wrote, you kind of just like to keep. So we'll see how that all works out when we graduate.
I know I have talked to some past seniors, and they wish they could have their comments email more, not just to email people on it, but to just be able to look back and be able to figure out how to use, write the Reddit paper and use it for college experience. So I think it'd be cool to keep.
Very good. Maybe Mr. Langmore has a comment about that. I saw something come across. I don't know if he goes unmute and has a comment.
I was giving, I just shared on the chat that girls quite a bit of time in your senior year will make sure we start reminding you and working with you on transferring files over to other personal drives or, you know, and if it were up to me, I would definitely keep your school Gmail forever, but Mr. Hill, the Chief Information Officer, I don't think that would have been a thing for him, so, sorry.
Hey, thanks for your support.
Girls, if you want to use your new college email anyway, because you're going to get Spotify at half price when you go to college if you use your new college email and Netflix, so don't worry, it's all going to work out.
Mr. Hill, you owe Mrs. Kuya, and she saved you there.
Right.
Okay, well, one other question. You mentioned ACT. How is that working? What, I haven't heard. Do you know how it's working for you girls?
So we got an email, obviously, it was canceled for the school year. And then personally, I signed up for the June 13 ACT, so there's still planning. You can still sign up for them throughout the summer. We'll see if we actually can take it or not, I don't know. And then, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the school is going to offer an ACT in the fall.
I think we can do it in October.
October. And that would be free, I think, so.
Correct. June date is still up in the air, so is the method of delivery for our prep. Maybe Mrs. Kuya has some thoughts on that. I know we're working on how to deliver prep for students in a safe way, but our schoolwide offering of a college and career readiness assessment will be offered to next year's seniors in October. We took the October date. It's Tuesday of Homecoming Week.
Excellent.
That's awesome. Yeah, fun week.
I know Mrs. Bealan talked about having Mrs. Rude come in ahead of time, hopefully, and do some ACT prep with you guys again before the test, and then we will do ACT next summer in our usual format, would be our plan. And by May 26, you will hear about the June ACT date. And if it doesn't do it on that one, you can register for the July one.
Very good. I will say that I do know there's a young man that lives in our house that is looking for volunteer opportunities that might be able to help with some ACT prep if you know somebody that wants a little bit more help, so. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to have you with us this year, and you've done a great job representing your schoolmates and the district overall. So we appreciate your time, and thank you very much. We'll look forward to maybe chatting with you next year and having you representing in next year. But thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Anybody have anything else before we let them go? All right, thank you, ladies. Thanks for coming. You're certainly welcome to stay on, but you feel free to drop off if you have something more exciting to do. All right.
See you.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Board Committee Reports. The first one we have is Land and Facilities. Brandon, anything for us there?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
So as far as ALAF goes, we met about a month ago or so now, shortly after our last meeting. And where we're at currently is we are moving forward with campus signage, essentially directing traffic off of 16th Street to the different buildings and fields. So there'll be some, there'll be a sign closer to the west side and then closer to the east side by the KM Telecom Stadium, and then directing to the different buildings, high school, elementary school, and the middle school. And then the major fields of KM Telecom, the softball fields, and our other fields that have been renamed 1 through 5. So that's very exciting. Can't wait to see those up and going. The other thing, there's also some new signs that are going to be installed on the light posts at the high school. There are kind of blades that will be kind of the comment logo, and then also our commitment to excellence and commitment to staff, operational, and our different vision. We are also moving forward with the HVAC improvements. This funding and everything had come from the remaining bond sales. And we still, after having a remaining balance, some different projects came up. They were bid out, and they came in really well too, so we do have a small remaining balance on that for HVAC work. And the parking lots, the parking lot at the elementary school and everything will be redone, including a new bike pad, which I believe is done on the south side there, and then some work around the community building as well. All those were from the original payment bonds that we had leftover money as well, and currently, right now, I believe all those are used up. Something else that's pretty exciting, we are looking at adding additional bleachers to KM Telecom Stadium. This will be on the north side where the big bleachers are, and kind of look at a couple phases over the next two years, and adding essentially a section of bleachers on the east end of the north bleachers, and then followed by later on on the west side. So it may look a little uncentered for a period of time and stuff, but it'll definitely add a lot of seating and stuff to the field. As far as that, does anybody have any questions about anything?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, where's the funding coming for that signage?
Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the original, we still have funding available from the capital bond sale that is leftover.
That's correct, yep.
Good question. Any other questions for Brandon from Land and Facilities?
I just have one question regarding the gymnasiums. Are those outlined on any of the signs? As oftentimes, people are coming looking for Home Federal Arena, and they maybe missed what school that's in perhaps.
So Home Federal Arena is located on the signs off of 16th Street, and then as you turn into the high school parking lot as well. The east and west gymnasiums are outlined specifically from, in association with the elementary school as well. But those are the kind of three locations that were pinpointed on that, on the signage.
Anything else for Brandon? Okay, thank you, Brandon. We will move on to Personnel, and that has not met Angie, anything for us?
No, well, we haven't met. We, just as a reminder to the board, we did meet earlier this year to go through all of the employees that were looking at tenure or any of the changes that would be made with employees this year, but we have not met since the last meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Angie on Personnel? Okay, Finance, Finance has met on the 30th. We did talk through a lot of the bond projects. That was a majority of the time, and Brandon sort of walked through those bond projects through Land and Facilities. We did also have a capital update. Probably the most significant item that we talked about was the baseball settlement with the line that got hit earlier in that settlement when they were doing construction, electrical line, and that has been settled. We did talk a little bit of LTFM dollars, a little bit insurance settlement, some of the hail damage, a little bit of that. And then a little bit of student activities account that will, those will be run through the district now. It was a recommendation before, and now it sounds like they will be run through the district. So any questions for Finance? Okay, we will move on to Policy. Amy, anything for us there?
Yeah, I have quite the list tonight. First of all, this policy is one of the most exciting committees to be on, and this last go-around, especially as we had many different committees working together and the admin team. So I want to give a special thanks to Brock and Trent for humoring us and meeting with us to help us further understand. I'm going to start with 513, and I know this is the first read, so please make sure you're looking at these and getting back with any questions, comments, or concerns. Ariana did some excellent work and is incorporating the Iowa Acceleration Scale into that policy, so if you want to look through that. We did receive some additional information on the Iowa Acceleration Scale. I'm not so, to further understand it, if you would like a copy of that, please let me know, and I will forward that on to you. 406.1, we're looking into digitizing, and what does that look like and what does that mean? There's so much that goes into it, so we'll be tasking Mr. Hill with following up on some questions for us as to how can we safely and legally keep that information. 412, we talked about, and it was, I can't think back to how long it was presented, but it's just the per diems and breaking it down by who gets paid what clubs and the different activities. So Brock has done a lot of work in that, making sure that the language is all very clear. And we did realize that, Mark, how long ago was that, that the initial dollar amounts were set? Was that 2008?
It was prior to me, and I think we thought it was somewhere in the 2005 to 2008.
So clearly, cost of meals and lodging have gone up significantly, so we made accommodations for that to not increase burden on our very generous and giving coaches and leaders. And then the last one I want to really focus on is 510. We did recently just talk about this at the April meeting as far as the pass no credit. So what we did is, you'll note that changes were made to the policy as a whole, so that rather than say that if a student doesn't or has an F, average, they're not able to participate, we did also change to add the language "no credit," anytime there's not. So any kid who's taking, or student who's taking a class for pass no credit, if they received no credit, they will not be eligible for their activities, the same as if they had received an F. That being said, we made a special addendum regarding the 2024th quarter grades, because this obviously is something that is pretty significant. And rather than rewrite the entire policy just for this one quarter, we decided to incorporate that within it. And then Mark has done great work, and I believe Trent as well, to make sure that for that credit recovery for any of those students needing it for this fourth quarter, they can get that through ZED. And we're very specific that they will go through ZED to get that credit recovery. Now, one thing that I really want to point out in that, and it's linked in the policy, is that this is, all of this work that has been done is specifically to make sure that it's aligning with the MSHSL bylaws 205 and 206. So please, if you have a few minutes in the next few weeks, read through those. If you have any questions, I am pretty versed in them, but I think Brock would be the one to reach out to if you have any questions on that. And if you can also look at Section 2B, the types of evidence to be considered, if you have any thoughts in regards to that, please reach out to the Policy Committee with those so that we can, I just want to, I'm not going to give any more information, other than we'd like to know what your thoughts are and how that reads. That was brought to our attention from another committee, and we really appreciate that, and so we want to open it up for all of you to look at. And that is what I have for Policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for walking through those highlights. Any questions for Amy on those? Any comments?
Amy, I do have at least a couple of questions. Now, you said contact the Policy Committee. What my concern is, is the 510.1 KM policy. Number 2, General Statement Policy. If you look down at Section B, it says the types of evidence to be considered, and 209. Now, my concern is number 8 under that section, as far as it lists a, 1 through 7, basically are infractions that would be considered to be excluded from activity. Now, number 8 basically is, it states any other deemed appropriate by the administration. I guess my question is, is that a policy? And this is not a dig on any of our administrations, okay? But my concern is, public perception on number 8 is that our administrators have the right to make policy with that.
I'm glad that you bring that point up, and we had a lot of discussion around this, and so there's a couple of thoughts. Yes, the handbook has many infractions, how many pages? 20 pages, 40 pages of infractions? But you can't possibly encompass every single thing that's going to come up. When we were seeing social media emerge on a weekly basis, there were issues coming up with social media. And so what this allows for is the discretion of the admin team. And what's so great about our admin team is they don't just make that snap quick judgment. They meet, they talk, they get all the information before they determine what's appropriate. Another thing is, is right now, nowhere does it say that you can't go, this is going to be crude, I apologize, you can't go urinate on another student's car. Nothing states that, but clearly, that's not appropriate, and that's not right, and there should be some punishment that goes along with that. So because we can't possibly think of everything, this then allows for the guided discretion of the admin team when those new situations arise. It allows them to have something to fall back on when they are making those tough decisions, because if we didn't include that, people could go and urinate on whoever's car they want and not have any.
Well, this is the way I'll get it. Currently, we have a 40-page Code of Conduct Handbook, okay? We also have the Minnesota statutes, which have literally thousands of orders, or basically statutes against conduct. We also have the federal code. But I'm looking at the handbook, and I don't understand, as far as the example of urinating on somebody's car. The main one that sticks out to me is the use of obscene language or gestures. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that's an obscene gesture. You could do, you could look at the damage and destruction of private property, acts of vandalism. But if you can't rely on that, we can definitely go to the State of Minnesota code, which is, sorry, a second here. 609.72 is under the Disorderly Conduct Code, and it meets the criteria. It obviously happened in a public place, and it was offensive and obscene, which meets the criteria of disorderly conduct. And there were, another example was actually given to me about hypothetical where a student would be up on the roof. Well, believe it or not, which I guess it doesn't surprise me, Minnesota statute actually has a statute against unauthorized people on a roof of a school. I'll try to find that. Not that it's, it's under the trespassing one, it's under 609.605, and it's subsection 4, trespass on school property. It is a misdemeanor for a person to It is a misdemeanor for a person to be on the roof of a public or non-public elementary, middle, or secondary school building unless the person has permission from a school officer to be on the roof of the building. What I'm saying, my point is, that between all of these policies and statutes, that I have complete faith that our administrative staff can come up with a reference that so, that we've written or the state has written, that they can fall back on. Another, another comment was about faith in our administrative staff. We, I have total faith in our administrative staff, but we do, all have biases, whether we admit to it or not, but we all do. And, and like I say, again, that's not a, it's not a dig on any of our administrative staff, but we do have biases. And as far as trust, I felt a little bit like maybe the administrative staff didn't trust us to write policy that was good enough to cover all this stuff. If, if there's a policy that doesn't seem to cover what we needed to, I would like to know because I want to write policy that does cover that. I understand that, you know, things are changing and we need to keep up with that, but I just don't want to have a catch-all policy that would, would try to cover all of that.
I appreciate the work that you have done, Mark. You have done an incredible amount of research, and I, I definitely appreciate that, and I hear what you're saying. From a legal, with my legal background, I think having that catch-all, because even with all those thousands of statutes and laws that have been put into place, it still doesn't cover everything, especially with how fast technology is moving. And we need to be able to have the ability as things happen, as opposed to, oh, we learned our lesson now, now we're going to go back and then have to write a policy for that because damage has already been done. So we need to be able to have that discretionary piece, which will be backed largely by the statutes that you have researched and the different policies that are set in place. Because no one's going to be throwing out a punishment without sound reason or a consequence without sound reason, and so it'll be those that they can rely, fall back on. We also don't have the luxury necessarily of time in these situations because there might be an infraction in November, but by the time we're able to go back and find all this information, is this really okay? Is this not okay? We're now in March, and that student has been in activities that full-time, or they've been participating the whole time. Nor do we have the dollars to pay for a legal team to, every time a student has an infraction, to be researching to see where we can go with it if it is, I don't want to use the word legal, but if it's appropriate or not. I don't know if that helps at all, or if anybody else wants to chime in on that?
Well, I guess I'd ask you, can you name a specific statute that's proactively written? All statutes are written, I believe, because of a reactive, reactively written. You can't, like you said, you can't predict any situation, but you can't just write a policy or a statute because something might happen in the future, is my point.
I think when you're talking about student safety, I think you can and you need to, especially with mental health that would be involved in some potential infractions. I think it's our job to make sure that we're protecting the other students and staff as well. And I think this, this is way more in-depth than I anticipated, but I do think that this allows for some of that deeper consideration when there's an infraction.
I think because you can't proactively write a statute for everything, to your point, which is, it's precisely why we need to have something that's a catch-all, to use your phrase, and I would be concerned with trying to turn our administrative staff into investigators trying to find, I don't know how long it took you to find those statutes, but, you know, turning our administrators into investigators, trying to look up a statute that, maybe a criminal statute for whatever, being on a roof or something like that, you know, whereas we know they shouldn't be up there, right? And let's do a lot of acceptable punishment and move on versus turning it into a, an actual legal case, you know? That's my concern.
I also think, and I'm going to call on both Brock and Trent for this, it's not that an incident happens and bam, punishment is held down. There's a huge process that takes place with people meeting with all parties involved. And Trent or Brock, do you want to walk us through what that looks like?
Investigation of an allegation kind of thing from violation of school rule?
Yeah.
Well, similar to any allegation, you investigate as thoroughly as you possibly can, all of the, all the details surrounding the allegation. That involves probably talking to kids, talking to witnesses, looking at cameras, you're just putting together kind of case. You go through an interview process where you read a student or, we call the student Tennyson warning about they don't have to share information, but they're encouraged to, and that we expect that the information to share is honest. And after you put together as full of a view of the incident as you possibly can, then you, as an administrator, make a, make a determination of what happened and then what is the best course of action to help that student learn and so that they make a better decision next time. Lots of information is gathered and is timely of a manner as possible. Some decisions have to be made faster than others, so sometimes that drives your investigation a little bit, but certainly acting as a, as a fair investigator and keeping student safety, well-being, and fairness in mind at all times while also considering what's the right consequence to make behavior change the most likely.
If I could just chime in a little bit, I think I like discretion, and I always have liked discretion, especially as a leader. And one of the, one of the places I, I know I need that discretion is, if you think back to even 10 to 15 years ago, when guns in school got big at Columbine, and all the districts across the nation went to a zero tolerance. And what zero tolerance policies actually did, the school boards put in, took all discretion away from, from anybody if, if there was any gun anywhere on the property. And since then, a lot of those zero tolerance policies have been thrown out, and now there are no tolerance policies. And what that does for anyone, so that means if I get a fifth grader who works on the farm and has a pocket knife, and they were bailing with dad, or they were doing something, they brought the, brought the knife in, I had the ability and the discretion to say whether or not I thought there was any intent. And if I didn't believe there was any intent, I could make a decision, and I got that discretion, and I needed that discretion. If, if we were a zero tolerance, the, that student would have been expelled from the school district, and they wouldn't have come back, depending upon when this happened in the history of the United States. And the same is true, you know, I grew up in, in Northwest Iowa, we brought our 12 gauges with our boxes of shells to school each and every day, and they were sitting in the back of the 66 Chrysler, and, because we got to hunt right after school, and we'd come right back, and that's just the way it is. If that happened today, and we've had students here that hunt either mornings or evenings and might, might show up for a school, if they, if we didn't have that discretion and they left their 22, or if they, if they left their 12 gauge or 20 gauge in the back end, you know, if I don't have the discretion, I can't determine if there was intent or not for there, for there to be any harm done to other kids. If there is an intent, then I can make a different decision than I think if there isn't. So I've always been appreciative of the discretion that policies give me and handbooks give me, and that's, I've been really enthused of this conversation, to be honest, because I think different points of view are good, and that's what, that's what we need in policy. But I can tell you, taking discretion away from administrators can really tie our hands at times because then the only thing we have to answer is exactly what's in the policy.
Thank, thank you. This, so tonight we'll be having a first reading of those policies. We are not approving those tonight. Between now and our next meeting in June, if you have concerns over those policies, we feel confident that if you need to have a policy meeting to discuss those, certainly can have that meeting and bring back a recommendation to the board on those, on those policies for the June meeting.
I said one more, one more comment. As far as, I have zero problem with the way the, some of these policies are being implemented, but there's a huge difference between implementation and discretion. Discretion doesn't give you the, give any authority to write policy. That's my point. There's, okay, let's, you pointed the question, as far as a former law enforcement officer, that I had tons of discretion. I did have tons of discretion, but I didn't have the authority to write statute or ordinances at will, depending on the situation. I guess that's my point. The other point is, when I first read this, the first thing that went through my mind is, I, I don't, I don't want to leave it up to one person to decide if my student or my child is doing something inappropriate. I'd rather leave that up to a elected board, that more than one person has that authority, collectively have that authority. That's, that was my initial reaction, but as far as discretion, I think these, I think the current, current handbook and policies give you way more discretion than is even probably needed, so that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody, for your input on that. Amy, thanks for walking through those policies. Anything else before we move on? Okay. With that, we are on to student activities. Mark, anything for us on that?
We did, we've been on the fifth. The main item on there was the 2020, 223, the athletic trainer services proposal. The new proposal by Mayo Clinic was, is going to be 24,000 roughly. I'm sorry, that was the, that was the old one, I'm sorry. The new proposal is for 27,500. The old one was 24,000. We did discuss possibility of using a different vendor. I think Brock had some conversations with Olsted, and at this time, they do not provide that service. But we did discuss, and it's, I believe it's a recommendation of the committee that we approve the proposed contract with Mayo Clinic as far as athletic trainer service.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for him on that? Okay. Next, we have ZED, which has not met, but do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I do. So ZED Summer Academy has officially been canceled for this year, so I just wanted to let you know that. Our next meeting is, well, let me back up. I'm not sure if I mentioned this at the last meeting or not. Pine Island did vote no. So we will be meeting this Thursday to kind of start really digging into that plan that I had laid out for you guys, and that Patrick had laid out for you. So when I have more information for you guys, I will disseminate that appropriately.
Thank you. Amy, any questions for Amy? All right. We're on to community education. Angie, anything for us?
Yeah, us, community ed has not met, however, there was a virtual 5K for the Run Walk Stroll this year, and even with the online silent auction, they still were able to make around $900 for that, so that's great for our community ed scholarships that that is often used for. The next event for community ed is the bike rodeo. That's going to be an online kind of bike drop-off throughout the day, social-distanced event, and so it's great to see community ed being innovative, thanks to Jenny and her team for still continuing to offer that, even though it's maybe not in the same format that it has been successful in the past year. One of the things that'll be up and coming is still the grant that was received by community ed, and it's going to be used towards CAM staff and infant toddler care potential for the future. And so they've been working hard to get appropriate documents together and applications for licensing to the state as that research is still underway.
Thank you, Angie. Anything for Angie on that? All right. And we're on to legislative. Steve, anything for us?
The next meeting is supposed to be the 21st. I assume it's still going to be on remotely, so we'll have something on the next one, but the session did end on Sunday. Of course, the big news of the bonding bill didn't get passed, so it sounds like they're going to be headed to a special session. We'll find out more later on that. But they did get a K through 12 funding bill done, and tomorrow Denise Dietrich is supposed to have a webinar going over the highlights from the legislative session as far as schools are concerned. So I checked the link, there's no link to it yet, so if you check the MSBA website, you should be able to log onto it tomorrow. I'm going to check it out. And if anything is major out of that, I will send it out to the board.
Thank you, Steve. Anything for Steve? Okay. With that, we are on to administrative board reports, which were outstanding this month. Thank you, first of all. Any, anything for our administrative team?
I had a couple of things as I ran through. Mr. Larson, would you just talk through the process for the students with the new scheduling that's going to be coming up for middle school? I'm very excited about that for our students and for our staff as well, and I know that it's been a push, and so just want to acknowledge that, how hard you've been working to make that happen, but maybe if you could just talk a little bit more about that, that would be wonderful.
Sorry, you cut off there just a little bit, but I heard something about the schedule and just kind of the process. I'm certainly excited to implement the new schedule for next year. You know, some of the bigger things that we wanted to maintain are those elective classes that students have the option of taking, project lead the way, art, Spanish, a couple of CTE classes as far as woodworking. We're, we're giving our students a lot more options and choice throughout the schedule, and I'm really excited to see, you know, kind of, see how it takes shape over the summer months here as our, as we just started implementing students into those classes, fifth and sixth grade. You know, part of the intent was to reduce class sizes as they were upwards of 30 to 32 kids. I'm excited to say we're about 26 to 28 kids, fifth through sixth grade, which really alleviates some of that burden on just teacher workload and so forth. By doing so, we have a greater flexibility with our fifth and sixth grade students and really utilizing this schedule to hone in on what students need. And so when we look at our fifth and sixth grade schedule, we know we're taking something from the elementary school. They use their flex time to record reading and math, and we want to continue that up into the middle school, so we're giving our students the best opportunities to succeed. Seven, eight's a little bit different. They're going to see more of a high school type class, or high school, high school type schedule. Obviously, they have their core classes in English, science, math, and social studies, either seventh grade US history or eighth grade global studies. But outside of that, they're in rotation of Health by Ed careers, and basically it's foods and nutrition. We're really excited about the new teacher we hired for our fax position. She comes with a little bit of a food science background, and so she's going to start helping our students implement some of those fax techniques as well as food science. So, you know, as far as the middle school schedule is concerned, there's a lot of opportunities for our students to experience new things and really find some of those passions that can drive their high school interests as they move from seventh to eighth and then into the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Did you guys get all that?
Yep, we got it. You came through perfect at this end. Anything else?
As I was also reading that high school report, Mr. Langmoore, I thought of a couple words as I was going through, and that was, how everything, as we are trying to innovate, is also very creative and also very student-focused. And so I wanted to say thank you to the high school staff for everything that you're done. I hadn't even realized all of the different components that were being...
components that were being creatively thought through for high school students, to honor them as we go through this fourth quarter, but I'm proud of everything that you are doing. So kudos to you and the team there for the way we're honoring students this
I'd like to point out in the activities department, how sometimes activities is the only saving grace that some of these students have, and how creative the entire, from the activities director all the way down to the coaches and the assistant coaches, making sure that everything that's being done as far as communication or support for these students that are involved aligns with the MSHSL. But I know what's been really awesome is Travis has put out workouts that it's really easy to disseminate them to all the students or the student athletes that want to use them, and it's just so nice that they have something to look forward to that's somewhat structured, as well as I was able to get a video recording. One of my dancers sent it to me about how the music department is doing a lot of things via Google Hangout, and so they're singing or they're playing a piece of music, and they're all in their own homes, but they're still staying connected and staying involved, and that's not easy. We really think about this a lot more as with those, the core classes in learning math at home and science, but really, you know, there's so much more to it. So for the entire activities department, you know, thank you for everything that's being done because it's pretty awesome to see it unfolding throughout the community.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work this year. Thanks for putting the board reports together since this is it, right? Summer's for you guys pretty soon, so we won't see it for a while. So thanks for all your hard work. Thanks for all the reports. That's all I want to say.
I had just a couple of things. First, was sort of a question for Mr. Larson in the middle school. I know a lot of people look forward to that DC trip, and I'm wondering if there's any creative ways that that might be scheduled or rescheduled or any way for those kids to experience that. Any discussion on that? I know it wasn't in your report, but as you, I read your report, I saw, I thought I was thinking about it.
Josh, I wanted to actually have some conversations with Jeff, if you'll be able to tackle it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead, Josh.
Okay, sorry. Jeff Bigg and I have had several conversations. Obviously, ideally, this coronavirus goes away and students are able to participate over the summer months, but obviously, we have to have some contingency plans in place. We were working on using the week over ME8, so that way those students would only maybe miss two days, and unfortunately, another school was in there and grabbed that one right away. Obviously, we've had some talks about maybe during this fall or next spring, but we're still kind of just in limbo right now with everything that's going on. As it's scheduled, they're still planning on going. However, we may be taking two trips next summer with our eighth grade, our current eighth graders, and then next year's eighth graders. So obviously, we're in the planning process of that still, but a lot of that is dependent on the times that are available because Cassin-Mannerville is the largest school that goes with legacy tours out of Iowa, and so we're kind of stuck in their good graces because they don't have much flexibility outside of the four buses that we take along. So right now, we're just working together to find a reasonable solution for our kids, so that way they're not missing too much high school if we do decide to go through the, excuse me, the beginning of this year or next spring. But right now, we are still planning.
Very good. Thank you. We trust your leadership on that. I just wanted to hear what the plans were, so thank you for working through that and making that trip available at some point in their career at Cassin-Mannerville. So thank you. I did really, really enjoy the visualization tour that Mrs. Wheatonbach took everybody on as fifth graders that will be coming in, or fourth graders that will be coming in as fifth graders. I thought it was very innovative. I really liked the, like Mrs. Tree was their dog, and I really liked the school song at the end that the music department put together. That was, you know, creative. I think we'll probably see more of that kind of thing. And I also really liked the CAM staff, the Missing You video, too, and I just think the things that have been done there are innovative and creative, much like I would say the same thing about the elementary one when I went and I was reading and said, "Go to the website," and I visit the website, and you get the initial welcome video, very nicely done with great music, and then you start going in to see what curriculum actually happens, and they go into each grade. I'm in second grade and reading and watching, you know, all the lesson plans that get laid out and for the kids and them doing the read-along with the kids, and it's really, really, really good work that sits behind that, and I wanted to say thank you guys for all of that work and the staff for really figuring out ways to be engaged and keep the kids engaged. I'll open it up. Arianna, I talked about second grade, if you want to talk about any of that website or the staff and the work they do on a daily basis to put those lessons together online. So I was just saying, Arianna, if you want to talk about it, feel free to talk about that curriculum that you put online. I don't know if you can hear me, but... Mrs. Redd?
Yeah, thank you. I have been reading. Can you hear me now? Are you able to hear me now? I'll beep in, hopefully you can hear me. I just want to speak to the talents of our elementary staff and all that they have done. We thought from the start that we should be a team, that every grade level should work together, and so that has really been our mindset from the start and has helped us. I think I'm having tactic difficulties, so I'll bow out with that, but we're doing great.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I think the discussion around here was that probably the YouTube is a few seconds behind, and that's why we're seeing this. So I'll try to limit any questions. I did just want to say to Mr. Langmore, thank you for all your work with graduation and being innovative there and being, I think the whole, the way graduation's been put together has been something that's been emulated around southeastern Minnesota. I think they're using some of those ideas, and they stem right from Cassin-Mannerville in this district. So thanks for all the work you did, not only for Cassin-Mannerville, but to develop those ideas that are used around southeastern Minnesota today for graduation. So thank you for that. I think that's really all I had. If anybody has anything else for the admin team? Okay, thank you for all your work this year. Tremendous team that's been built, and I think that's one of the reasons that not only has southeastern Minnesota emulated graduation, but a lot of the things that have happened since COVID-19 has been upon us, have been used not only in this district but throughout southeastern Minnesota. So thank you for that. You're certainly welcome to hang on with us, but we understand if you'd like to drop off. So thank you for another great year, and we'll see you, do we see them at all in June? Not overseas?
We'll see you in August.
In August. We'll see you in August. Thanks for all your work. Really appreciate it, guys. Does not go unrecognized from a board perspective, as I look around the board and watch the head shake, so thank you. With that, we will move on to Superintendent Matuska's communications. It's yours.
I was also going to give some kudos to not only Trent, but a number of the folks that are involved in the graduation ceremony, and I'd like to also echo my daughter, who spoke very highly of the baccalaureate, and I don't know how many of you got a chance to review the baccalaureate, but it was done very professionally, very faithfully, and I thought the kids just did a fantastic job, especially those that were involved with it. It was very difficult, it was actually very difficult to watch because we all wanted to be there. At least I wanted to be there, and I think back, and St. John's was actually where we had one of the original baccalaurates when I got here, and it was a really, really touching time, and I missed it, and I wished I could attend that all the time, but I thought the kids did a fantastic job. So the only other thing is, I know you'll be getting some further direction on what the school board needs to do for graduation. There may be, I'm thinking there may be even a mandate that we put you back in a car. So if that happens, just because we need to stay under the CDC guidelines, I'm thinking there might be a place where we park you up front and make sure that we recognize you as our board representatives, but I don't want to cross the CDC guidelines of a gathering. So we'll stay tuned. Just know that we're working as hard as we can to make sure that we've got a safe experience for all of the graduates, a safe experience for all their families, but yet a top-notch ceremony that everybody can be proud of. And I think what's been developed so far by the high school staff has been just phenomenal. So I thought also I would review, there's an agreement in each one of your packets that deals specifically with the judgment purchase that we have been talking about on a number of occasions. We were very hopeful that this might be able to be finalized this evening, but CHS Legal has yet to give it a final review. So they wanted, they said we could go ahead and do it, and then if they made any changes, we could come back and do it again. I said, "How about if we just wait until all of your changes are final?" There's some real interesting things in here besides just the judgment purchase that would allow us a lot more flexibility, but there's also some pieces in here that we mentioned probably six, well, heck, it's probably about eight months ago, if not even more than that, when we had this discussion, that CHS also wants to become a player at Cassin-Mannerville High School. And so we have given them a template of a naming rights agreement that we have had with other places like Minnesota Wi-Fi, the Camp Telecom, Home Federal, and they've got some interest in also developing that type of relationship with us in our agricultural area. It would also, on the 28 acres that we own to the north of the existing soccer fields, they're interested in becoming the, kind of the sole director of how that 28 acres, minus whatever Zed might take when they build those, but being the sole decision-maker and assisting us with a plan for that 28 acres that would fit our needs, would fit some of their needs, make it a lot higher profile plot. I don't know what that means, if we could do some seed pilot sites, if they want to do some testing of some different varieties for different seed corn companies or different beans, but I think it would be an awful lot of fun. That's something that Trent is just starting to get introduced to, so he would probably need some discussions with Mrs. Pagel about that, but I'm pretty excited. Our current contract, Bob, correct me, because I think we just talked about it, I think this summer is the last summer on our existing contract for our ag lease for the farmer that farms that land, so that gives us some flexibility going into the future. And even if we chose to do some cash rent going further, we try to run that through and have, at least make it a learning experience for some of our kids that are in ag right now. So I'm really excited about that, and I think you're really excited about, I'm really excited about the rest of the portions within this. But if each of you could take an opportunity to read through that, go ahead and bring that home with you today. You won't have to return that to me, but just know there could still be some changes depending upon what CHS Legal has to say about the naming rights agreement and the judgment purchase. So I think we're getting closer and closer and closer to where what some of our goals are is a school board for a land acquisition, and I think this puts us in a lot better position as we go forward. So Bob, I don't know if you had anything else to add, thumbs up or thumbs down? Good to go. So thanks for taking a look at this. This has been a lot of work in the making, and I think Joe Roach has been doing a great job putting this all together. I'd also like to compliment Bob because when Joe needs things to happen in a short period of time, and I'm busy with other things, Bob has really taken the lead on this. So kudos to you, Bob. Thanks for tackling it. And that's all I had today.
Anything for Superintendent Matuska? I just did have one sort of a comment, and that was, as you're thinking about graduation ceremony and if the board does need to be in vehicles, and I'll look for the board's approval on this, but I certainly wouldn't want to take the spots of graduating seniors if we could be...
I'm thinking the driveway that comes up front, because nobody will be on that anyway. And I put all those cars at an angle, and I don't know, I haven't even talked to Trent about it yet, but we'll have teachers in some places. We'll have the graduates. We promise we'll have all the graduates in the key locations throughout the parking lot.
Thank you. That's all. That was it.
Our hope is that we can put each of you about two to three meters apart from each other and have you in chairs, kind of sitting along the glass out in front of the high school. We just, I need to make sure that, people are going to be watching, I just got to make sure that we don't get too large of gathering that would cause a lot of ruckus. And it's not that we couldn't have you out to get recognized, because I think that's important as school board members, but after that recognition, if you're not speaking, we might bring you in for your own safety.
Thank you. Anything else for Superintendent Matuska? Okay, with that, we are on to public input. I did check my email. I don't have anything. Mr. Fearsom is shaking his head, so it does not look like we have any public input. We'll move on to consent agenda. Consider approval of bills.
I move to approve the whole consent agenda, Trent? Or are you looking for that?
That's my fault, yes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the entire consent agenda.
Thanks, Angie. In a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mark. Any discussion on anything in the consent agenda?
Just a quick thing. Amy did bring up that I feel like I did realize but didn't come to mind with one with Mariah Bickle being a PLC leader, correct? Just more on the fact of like, was she picked, why was she picked, I guess? I guess if Arianna was here, it might be easier to explain.
Yeah, I don't know that answer. I don't know if she volunteered, if she was selected by your cohorts. I don't know that answer.
I think the bigger question is...
I think the bigger question is, that's an incredibly involved role, and there's a lot of leadership that's involved in that. And so it's just, it's unclear as to doing well in a role like that, but yet, being in the situation they're in is very, it just isn't clear. And then it moves to the, you know, and I know that we're 30,000 feet, and this is more that 10,000 feet, but if there's someone who does have things that they need to be worked in, why are we putting them in a role where they are extending themselves so much at the same time? That practice is just a little concerning.
I certainly understand your concern.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved. We will move on to action items. We have no old business and new business. We have 6.2.1, approve the 2020-2021 resolution for membership in Minnesota State High School League. This is an annual resolution which we, which we act upon. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Thanks, Steve. In a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angie. Any discussion on that before we... Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the 2020-2021 resolution of membership in the Minnesota State High School League, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. 6.2.2, approve the bid acceptance for the forum room HVAC alterations, which you have in your packet. Do we have a motion to accept that bid?
So moved.
Thanks, Mark. In a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the forum room HVAC alterations, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. And 6.2.3, the Fernbrook MOU, and this is, for those who are not aware, this is part of the mental health practice that we are involved in here at the district, recognizing that there are those needs. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the Fernbrook MOU?
So moved.
Thanks, Amy. In a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mark. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of Fernbrook MOU, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. The motion carries. And we are on to the first reading, which is, Amy went through a number of these, and we had some discussion over these. This is the first reading. We will be back in June to approve these. So if you would, please take some time and go through these, and we will be looking at those for approval in June. With that, we are on to informational items. Graduation is 2:00 PM, Sunday, May 31st. I'm not sure exactly, there'll be, typically, there's information that comes out about what time we are to gather and how that's gonna happen. I'm sure that'll come out again, and so we'll look for that. 7.2 is the next special school board meeting, is Monday, June 1st, in the community forum room. And then our next regular school board meeting is June 15th, 7:00 PM, in the forum room here at Cassin-Mannerville. Before we adjourn, is there anything anybody has?
Just making sure that by the 1st of June, the superintendent evaluations are complete, and the report is there. So I don't know if everybody's got a copy of that yet, or what the end of the year is, but...
Okay. We'll, I'll get it out this week. So thank you for reminding me of that. That's my, that's my fault. I didn't get that out. So we'll have it out by the end of the week. Ben even sent me something on it. So with that, anything else? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thanks, Steve. In a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, state aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming. Thanks for hanging with us, guys.